Ready? I'd like to call the October 3, 2019 meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
You can note that we have two evacuation routes on either side of the room. So we're going to go into our executive, I'm sorry, public work session, and we're going to start with the district testing results. Dr. Johnson?
Thank you very much. Each year annually, we provide to the community a synoptic view of the testing results. In grades three through eight, we do both the state testing results and what we've become accustomed to using to assess our children in those grades, the NWEA. And then in the high school, we'll ask that the staff from the high school will, in fact, provide us with a summary of both the Regents' results and the IB. So when we start with the three through eight testing, I'll ask Dr. Pelletieri, if you would, please.
Dr. Johnson, thank you very much. Yes, three through eight assessment overview for, this is for the 18, 19 school year results. And this PowerPoint will be on online, so you could take the time to look at it if you choose to. There are links embedded in it as well to take you to other documents. There are, of course, four levels of performance. New York State, level one, two, three, and four. Your focus is usually around trying to get students to level three and four, which are passing or exceeding standards. In grade three, 90% of our youngsters in ELA achieved a level three or four, as compared to New York State, which is at 52%. In grade four, 75% of our students, as compared to, again, New York State, at 48%. Grade five, 68% of our students. Grade five in ELA and math, as I spoke to colleagues in other districts, seemed that those tests were rather rigorous compared to the other grade-level tests. But still, you can see the difference between Rockville Center students and the rest of the state's students. Grade six ELA, again, comfortably above the state, 68%. And grade seven, compared to 40%, and grade eight, 70% compared to 48%. Grade eight is, we did extensive work in grade six two years ago, and last year and beginning this year as well. We're doing a great deal of work in ELA in grade eight and trying to raise the level of work there and our rigor in terms of ELA in those curriculums. So those are being, those have been revised and continue to be revised throughout the year. Grade four, science. Kids love science, especially early on with the hands-on pieces that we've really moved to the next-generation science standards, which the state has moved curriculum along with, and the kids do extremely well. Now, we do have students opting out of science, ELA, and math, and I'll talk about that in a moment. Math, again, you'll see similar results. Grade three math, 85% compared to 55% in the state. Grade four, 71, 50. And in grade five, 71, 46%. Grade six, we begin our transition to all students taking algebra in eighth grade. That happens throughout the years. It's not all of a sudden in seventh grade. We teach them everything they need for algebra. We have to build that backwards. And so grade three has little pieces, grade four, grade five gets, grade six, it really starts to change. Grade seven as well, where our focus is really on preparing students for algebra in eighth grade as opposed to success or lack thereof on the state assessment. It's really the Regents' that we want to point to here. But opt-out does play a number. As you looked at those results, you saw those numbers go down as kids get in higher grades. And you'll see here that opt-out results go up, right? We start opting out more. Oftentimes, particularly in ELA, each grade. We still have large numbers, over 50% of our students in grade five, for example, are not taking the ELA assessment. Almost 50% are not taking it in math. Grade six, seven, and eight. Grade eight is just the fact that only a quarter of the students are actually taking the test at this point. These numbers are lower than they had been in the past by a few percentage points, but certainly a large opt-out number. And it is difficult to judge. I could say, oh, this is wonderful. 90% of my third graders are doing this or doing that. But if, in fact, 41% are not being tested or assessed, it's hard to argue one way or another around those numbers. In eighth grade, you see, we do not have eighth-grade math because those students take the Regents', and they take the algebra Regents', and 94% are passing the algebra, passed the algebra one exam this past year at the middle school, and 91% earth science. And again, these are entire cohorts of students. These are our entire 300 so odd, some odd numbers of kids, or 286, whatever the cohort was last year. That's all of our students taking those assessments. A lot of districts have similar passing percentages, but they, quite honestly, only have honors students. Small subsets of cohorts take that. So that's something the middle school and certainly a curriculum should take, and this district should take great pride in. NWA is an assessment that, for the great majority of our students, all take. There might be one or two handful of kids that perhaps don't take the NWA. It is a through-year assessment, so kids take it three times. Students, students take it three times in grades three, actually K through eight. Students take it. You see our reading results, the mean in Rockville Center comfortably above the NWA mean. Hundreds of thousands of students take the NWA all across the United States. You see us in grade three, four, and five. A nice pattern playing above the national mean. In math, similar. You see us, again, comfortably above the NWEA national mean. So this is something that I actually talked about it briefly. Look at that jump in grade seven. Fantastic results in grade six and seven this past year. But grade eight comes back down, and that's the reason why we don't just accept looking at the state data and saying, oh, we had a nice year in the state data. We look at NWEA as well. So we're looking at multiple measures to make sure we're seeing all sides of a student and their growth. Math, again, moving comfortably ahead, and that's, a lot of that is to do with the Regents' in eighth grade as well and their preparation for that. There is a linking study between NWA. You can find that linking study if you're really interested in that data as they try to correlate state test results with NWA's results so that you can recognize where there is correlation or where there might not be. And there are, there is a website, Engage NY, for parents that they can check out information around the tests, the three-through-eight math tests and ELA, so they can get more data around the tests themselves and more information about questions that are released and the like. You know, we're all part of the puzzle, right? Parents, the PD that we do for our teachers, professional development, administration, working with students and supporting NWA curriculum. It's all pieces of the puzzle that we try to put together for our students. This is an interesting snapshot. It's really color-based, and that's why I put it, even though it's hard to see the numbers. Where you see, this is from Nassau-BOSE's, where Rockville Center is compared to the rest of the region. So Rockville Center compared to Nassau County. Dark green means that you're doing very well compared to the rest of the county. We're up over 20% higher than other districts in Nassau County. So not the state, but Nassau County, we're above in these areas, as well as you saw before in the state. So dark green is something that you want to see. We're comfortably ahead in the majority of the areas in ELA. You see a white number in math, like, oh, wait a second. But that, we are 1% above. So again, math, we start to diverge. We start looking at pushing kids towards algebra, working with kids towards algebra instead of the state assessments. And that's why I'm not overly concerned about that white comparison number there. You do see red as well. Red is below the region. That is, we do have a single child who is out of the district who took those tests here, simply because they get to take the test here. And that's why you see red in just those two bottom categories. But you want to see that light up like that with that dark green, and that's something that we're certainly moving in the right direction with our kids. Opt-out is something that obviously kind of lingers overly soon. You have to be concerned about, and certainly plays a role. Any questions? In turn, too late. No, go ahead.
That's based off of New York State, state, our testing, which we have such high opt-outs.
Right.
We have anything like that for NWEA?
No, nothing close.
So the NWA is a countrywide mean. It's not a state or it has not--
It's a national norm, yes, a national mean. That's correct.
So it's not socioeconomic or anything? Is there's no data that we can sort of pinpoint more?
The combination of state results and NWA results, I think, gives us good insight into how our students are doing, growing or lack thereof, in areas where we have strengths and weaknesses. And so were it not for the NWA, we would have trouble in making sense of a lot of the state data. It's really vital. It's become part and parcel of what we do in this district. Again, three times a year, in the fall, in the winter, and again, in the spring. And we really do use that. We work with our students now. They talk with our students about growth and expectations and what do you think you can do here in terms of this weakness or this strength? And kids are able to, students are able to articulate. My wife always tells me, stop saying kids. Our students are able to articulate that themselves and show ownership around it. I think that's fantastic. So we're doing more and more with NWA results.
Are we looking at our NWA results, because let's focus on that, school-wide? Like, you know, for each school and our elementaries and looking at where we might have deficiencies?
So people say, what do you do in the summer when there's no, and when there aren't tech issues to deal with? We really dig deep into that data. And we look at teachers and growth with students. We look at grades and growth with students. We look at schools and growth with students. And we look, as a district, in growth with students. So, yeah, we definitely look at that.
Can I just jump in here on this? The nice thing about the NWE, getting back to what you were saying, they only have national norms. In other words, all the participating school districts in the United States actually create the foundation for the pool of students who then become the comparison group to which we are, which we are included. We've talked to them recently about, in doing one for New York State, possibly even doing one for smaller regions. They have not done so in the past. In part, they don't have a contract with the state. And number two, there have not really been enough students to create that sizable pool for us to be able to put together sizable and decent-sized comparison groups. So I think it's on the horizon. It will happen, but not this year. Getting to the other issue with regard to what we do in the summer. One of the really nice things about the NWEA and one of the really best-selling points is that while he and I, in fact, may spend, or Noreen and Robert and other members of our staff and the principals go rather deep into this, it is an incredibly valuable tool in working with teachers because it provides them, student by student, information that they understand and they get literally the next day. So once we conclude the testing, this is put together in reports that are then shared with the teachers. They can use this to modify their instruction and gain insights into the kids themselves. So while it's a valuable tool for us and while we do school-by-school, grade-by-grade comparison, what we do is focus on our district in comparison to the rest of the world right now. But that certainly is available should any member of the board would like ever to see it. It's more valuable as an instructional tool for principals and for teachers, and they use it.
I also can look at areas where we feel there are gaps and say, okay, this piece on fractions, let's look at our curriculum and see where we do that in our timeline and see if we need to adjust that or do more around that. And I can get that information from NWEA, and I can get it from the state results as well. But with 50% of the kids, not students, not taking the test, we need to, that needs to change. So this is just a timeline, a roadmap as we move forward. You'll recall that we adopted in New York State the Next Generation Learning Standards in 2017. We are still, we are coming out of the raising awareness phase. So I hope you all feel aware. And we are moving into the building capacity stage. But Rockville Center has been at this work for some time now, working with our teachers and writing curriculum around these pieces. So we are ready to go ahead with full implementation of the Next Generation Learning Standards, which will be next year, September 2020, and going forward. And then they're talking about new assessments in spring of 2021.
I had a quick question about the seventh grade. You saw that there was like a kind of an incline there. Was there something different done in the curriculum or some change or something that made that particular grade go kind of higher?
I definitely want to give credit to the seventh-grade teachers. I also want to give credit to sixth grade. And you'll talk, you'll recall the work we did exclusively in sixth grade the year prior that I think really helped those students to achieve. And again, we're doing that hard work again in eighth grade, starting last year and beginning and carrying through this year. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're moving on to high school? John Murphy?
Do I have slides? Okay. Thank you.
Give you a pointer.
Thank you. And at the risk of overstating the obvious, the following is a real holistic cursory view, and any one of these exam subjects or programs deserve greater attention than that, which I'm afforded in this brief time. So what we're going to do in our brief time, Ms. Nizel Cross and I, is to walk you through two processes, both of which starting holistically and then narrowing down, looking at the programmatic, the holistic view, graduation rates, Regents' diploma rates, and then focusing on individual subject results that comprise those percentages. So I'll start with the Regents' exams, and starting with the graduation rates from last year. So the focus point in both of these programs is looking at our learning opportunities as a series of courses rather than a series of silos, siloed courses that operate individually. The fact that this is a state of perpetual improvement. Sometimes it's linear and sometimes it's not. But we've developed this habit of, as soon as the assessment results come out, to start in July with the detailed analysis and deconstruction of those assessments so that we're ready in September to be even better. And the last, but not least, is the transparency and the extent to which we're able to really dig deep down, looking into how students learn, why they learn, and how we can better avail of that as a result of our approach and the programs that we've chosen. So speaking of our graduation from the New York State perspective, 99% of our graduates last year earned a Regents' diploma or better. There are different types of diplomas. The three most specific categories are a local diploma, which historically was for special education students who failed to meet the Regents' standard, but that is now open to all special education and general education students. The Regents' diploma, which includes our own local standards plus five Regents' exams, English, Global Studies, US History, one math, and one science. The next level is the Regents' with advanced designation, which is eight Regents' exams plus a foreign language exam or combinations of the above. I'm oversimplifying it. For instance, instead of the foreign language for the Regents of exam with advanced designation, the student can take five credits in the arts or in CTE curricula. There are variations within all of these, but those are the three main strata. So it's worth noting that our pride and joy, the jewel of the high school, our core program or life skills program are not eligible for a Regents' diploma. They're, they receive a SAC credential, which is for skills and scholastic achievement versus life skills. The state, however, includes them in our graduation rate as non-graduates, despite the fact that they stay here for six years and are not, not working toward a Regents' diploma. For the fourth year in a row, Southside High School has been designated by the state as a reward school. A reward school, basically, means that we, in math and English, language, arts, have achieved in the top 20% in terms of passing and mastery rates. And there is no appreciable gap in our passing and mastery rates with historically disadvantaged students based on socioeconomic status and ethnicity. Those graduation rates comprised of a series of exams, all of which are listed here. The larger, bold-faced numbers are the ones from the 2019 year. Those in parentheses are those from the previous year. The passing rate and mastery rate tells one story. And I'll explain the column on the left and its importance in a few minutes. The things that, to note holistically, is the alarming stability in terms of the passing rates, especially amongst the core five that students need for a Regents' diploma, English, Global, US History, either Earth Science or Physics. Those that seem preternaturally low, there are reasons. For instance, Earth Science, the passing rate may seem to be comparatively low relative to the other high-passing rates. Algebra is only taken by a very, very small group of students, as is Earth Science. At the high school, historically, students who have either failed it in eighth grade or who have not taken it ever before, either, for instance, they transferred into the building. So usually, in Earth Science and Algebra, that's fewer than 20 students compared to, for instance, our geometry Regents', where 287 students took it last year. The reason that I include the number on the left is to give you an indication of the number of test takers in each exam. And I'll explain the reason for that's important in a second. It doesn't come as a surprise that 100% of our 11th graders take the English Regents'. Of course they do. They need it to graduate. Every New York State student needs to do so. But take in mind, Spanish and French, you have to add those up to take the percentage of students, our 10th-grade students who advance to that level of foreign language and takes the FLACs exam, which qualifies them for a Regents' with advanced designation. In other words, 98% of our students at, by 10th grade, qualify to take advanced studies in a second language. Again, living environment, not a surprise. Almost all of our students take it. The chemistry results, the passing rate is, I wouldn't call it a cause for alarm, but it is a cause for concern because it's gone in the negative trajectory, which is atypical relative to what we're accustomed to. The 77% pass rate for chemistry is not what we're accustomed to, and the work began yesterday, as Dr. Pelletieri mentioned, in us disaggregating the data. We don't have time for that, but maybe another time I can explain how we analyze the reports and go through the item analysis to look at areas specifically surgically that we need to improve rather than scattershot, taking a look at how we can improve ourselves. The reason that I include the cohort grade is because, and I'm not apologizing, but I'm contextualizing our pass rates. It's worth noting, especially what's considered elective Regents' exams and our passing rate, understanding that the goal here, as well as in the IB program, is not necessarily these numbers, which I'm proud of, but to ensure that our Southside graduates, upon leaving this high school, are as prepared as humanly possible for post-secondary education and that the decisions that they have made and that they will make in the future are theirs and not have been predetermined by their high school experience or lack thereof. In other words, that rather students struggle a little bit more here through a course that has challenges with support and have the option of extending their studies legitimately and pursuing the course of their choice, rather than those choices be limited by our lack of experience here at the appropriate level of challenge. The reason that I mention that is that this is a report, and I apologize for the size of it, we'll put it on the state website, that Nassau-BOSE's puts out, and they title it "A Summary of Elective Regents' Courses." And what you have are our results on the left and Nassau County's on the right. What this says is, here are the Regents' exams that are not required for a Regents' diploma. These are courses that are required for a Regents' with advanced designation but are not necessarily a graduation requirement, such as geometry and Algebra II, because the students have already completed the math requirement and Algebra. Similarly, art, science, and living environment are usually the Regents' requirement. Students do not have to take chemistry and physics. What you're looking at here, and the numbers here are higher than mine because what I provided you previously were our yearly passing rates, meaning the passing rate in chemistry for students who took it in August of 18, January of 19, and June. Our passing rate in June is going to be higher. That's the first-time test takers. But that's not the reason I'm showing you this slide. What you need to take a look at are who is taking these exams. In other words, our geometry Common Core Regents' results, which went up significantly, and a passing rate of 91% is high, but the number on the far right, what is that, a yellowish color? Okay. That's the passing rate of the cohort who took that exam. In other words, the state takes a look at the average class size, and they ask, what's the percentage of your average class passing this exam? Our rate is 94%. In other words, 94% of our ninth graders pass geometry the first time. You move to the right, that number for the county is 72%, meaning 72% of first-time test takers in geometry in the county, not the state, pass it at the first time. And as you progress, these are decidedly more difficult exams. Algebra II, 86% of our first-time takers pass it, as opposed to 67% in the county. Move to the bottom. Physics, our passing rate for our cohort is 65%, meaning 65% of our 11th graders pass the physics Regents' in 11th grade. For the county, that number is 28%. The ulterior motive is not to increase the passing rate or the average score. The goal is to make sure that our students are experiencing the challenge and the requisite skills that make them in the driver's seat in grade 13, irrespective of where that is. As a result, when we look at our AP math scores, the thing that I am most proud of is that 79% of the class of 2019 took an AP math course. That means they fulfilled the Regents' and the IB requirements and then elected to take an AP course, whether that's BC Calculus, which is the most rigorous of the calculus courses, AP Calculus, or AP Statistics. The passing rates are not laudable. While the BC passing rate is significant, we've never been proud of the passing rates because the thing that we've always emphasized is get kids a year of calculus under their belt before they graduate Southside High School to increase the likelihood that they can take credit-bearing courses and calculus hitting the ground running. In most schools that offer AP courses, the running operating premises, irrespective of how you did on IB Calculus, you should take a year of calculus in college anyway, in terms of level of preparedness and rigor. But we're going to go back to that because we've taken a long, hard look in that over the years, and there are changes in our midst where we're in the middle of it in the second of a third-year process, where we will be implementing changes to the IB and AP sequencing of courses in the coming years that ask that same question that I've been talking about. How do we make sure that our students are mathematically literate and can take the advanced math courses in college that best prepare them while still having a choice with IB and AP, but maybe giving it a more streamlined two-year sequence rather than a one-year sequence where they actually have a steadfast, better chance at doing better in the IB and AP sequence when leaving here? But more about that later.
Hello, everyone. So I'm basically going to take the same approach Mr. Murphy did by giving you an overview of our IB results and then narrowing into more specific information. So last year, we were very happy to see, once again, robust student participation in the program with 451 juniors and seniors, either registered as full diploma candidates, anticipated diploma candidates, or course candidates. Ultimately, we believe students benefit from any involvement in the IB program, but we are very happy to report that 115 students earned the IB diploma. And for us, that's an unprecedented 75% success rate amongst candidates. And what I want to point out is, that's only two percentage points away from the global success rate. And, you know, we've talked about this year after year. So many other schools and programs gate their programs, whereas we open up the opportunity for any student who wants to participate. So that's really just a phenomenal number for us. And, you know, ultimately, by the end of the year, we had 43% of the graduating class leaving here, not only with their New York State credentials, Regents' credentials, but also an IB diploma credential. So what, how does a student actually earn the IB diploma if they're going for the diploma? Well, they take six IB classes, or they're required to take six IB classes. So they take three at the higher level, which means a two-year class. And then they take three at the standard level, which is a one or a two-year class. And this comes from six core curriculum groups that you can see on the side there. Okay? Each course is graded on a scale of one to seven. And if we assume a four represents satisfactory-- satisfactory knowledge and understanding, IB says, six classes times the four, students are required to accumulate a minimum of 24 points in order to earn the diploma. The other aspect to the diploma is that these students also participate in the central elements. So a class called Theory of Knowledge, an extended essay of 3,000 to 4,000 words, and participation in CAS, which is Creativity, Activity, and Service, that they reflect on those experiences over the two years. But of course, not every student is a full IB diploma candidate. Some students are course candidates, meaning they take individual IB classes, maybe one, maybe three, maybe four. And so when we look at the next few slides, what we are looking at are the results in our individual IB courses. And this first slide are the higher-level exam results, and again, higher level means the two-year courses. So what you see here is the number of students registered for the course, our average score, and then the global average score. And in parentheses, you see last year's numbers as a point of comparison. So I just, you know, point out, we had some nice jumps in IB Business and Biology, and I do want to highlight IB Business because last year was only the second year that our students were sitting this course and this exam. And so the teachers have just done a phenomenal job with the course, as have the students who have experienced so much success with it. Stable results continue in English, and music, and art. And areas that we're going to be focusing on because results didn't quite match up with expectations include Physics and Film. I do want to point out that we do have a new film teacher. Deb Tankler retired last year. We were so sad to see her go, but we are very excited to see what Mr. Shotwell is going to bring to the course. Next, you see the standard-level exam results. Again, these are the courses that are one or two years in length. We were very pleased with the results in Math Studies, and Music, and Spanish, just to name a few. But again, we recognize there's further work to be done with courses such as Environmental Systems and Psychology. And something Mr. Murphy referenced earlier, you know, one of our key strategies is to request back assessments, closely analyze the work and the results, look for patterns, and think about what we can do in terms of adjusting instruction, you know, to hopefully serve our students better. Here are some of the courses where we had the strongest results, meaning scores of four or higher. And I do want to point out the fact that English, Spanish, and Math Studies are some of our most inclusive classes. They have the largest enrollments, they're heterogeneous, so it's really nice to see such strong results being posted in those particular courses. And then current news, which Mr. Murphy will take over.
Wait, there's more. So as we're, there's never a beginning and an end to the year. We kind of fade to gray and overlap one another. So last year, this summer was a busy summer, and on a busy summer, we usually have four to five curriculum projects where we're revising the curriculum. So last year, there were 15 due to a wealth of changes in the building. To list just a few, this is the first year that we're co-seeding IB English and English 11R as History 11 and IB History 11R, where students are being prepared for the IB assessments forthcoming, but also have the option of taking the Regents level, and in six very specific places in the course, have modified assessments that address the Regents standard rather than the IB standard. This is the first year that IB Spanish and French both have new assessments, so those curriculums were revised. We're participating in a pilot in theater that we're one of 12 schools piloting a new course, the theme of which is permeating all the changes to IB English. More is not necessarily better. And dealing with the increasingly complex world that our students are existing, there's an acknowledgement and an approach where workload duress and time spent on coursework is being significantly curtailed. The IB English course was going to be revised anyway, and the number of assessments that students are responsible for over the two years has been cut in half. That doesn't mean the course is any less challenging, but the student, actual physical work that they're having to produce externally has been curtailed, ultimately to give them time to think. That is going to be an evolutionary process that you're going to see throughout. It was also modified in the theater pilot where the workload and the word count has been significantly curtailed, to focus on quality, not quantity. You'll also see it in the math revisions, not coming up this year, but in the next two years, where they're envisioning the two-year sequence, and can we give our most sophisticated math students the options that they have now, where they can take a one- or two-year option in IB Math and then take BC Calculus, but also offer two-year options for those students who still want to challenge themselves but would rather take a more deliberative, two-year approach to a sequence of courses with more applications like math, statistical, that's in series, things of that nature. Those would be for students gravitating toward the social sciences or the humanities, but still want that challenging math rigor. In other words, can we still provide that same product that we've always grown accustomed to, keeping them as prepared as humanly possible, but also sequencing the course over one or two years to alleviate some of the workload duress that students, especially in this ultra-competitive environment, are experiencing? But it's not exclusively those two programs that we're addressing. This is our first year in the Pathways Program that required eight curriculum-writing projects. This is a self-contained classroom for students who are placed there by the CSE, who need a smaller learning environment, but are still taking Regents classes, working towards a Regents diploma. So we revised English, Academic Enrichment, Global Studies I and II, Living Environment, Algebra, and Algebra Plus. The overriding premise with all, oh, and one more, and I just have to plug this. The Living Environment curriculum has remained in place, but we partnered with Hofstra University and the National Science Foundation through a grant to initiate a four-year pilot. It's called STEM+C, and the research question that's being addressed involves computational problem-solving and coding. The question is, if you immersed coding principles, taught kids many lessons in coding in existing science coursework, what would happen? Would they learn the Living Environment or Biology curriculum better? Would they have their appetite whetted for coding? And do they learn, quote-unquote, "algorithmic thought," meaning linear sequential thought, which has applicability no matter where you're going? So it is programming, but it's also teaching them immersive coding modules, the goal of which is to find out, do students learn better through learning through STEM, basically? So this is the first year of the partnership. A community member has been working closely, Dr. Valenti has been working very closely with me, so I really appreciate his work, and we're really looking forward to that over the three and four years. Maybe students will get into coding, but at least they'll have a more authentic view of what it is and what it isn't by the time they finish ninth grade.
We've talked, I'm sorry, Mr. Murphy, I'm going to jump in for one second. We've talked for years about doing more around STEM and STEAM at our high school at a higher level. This is a perfect example of that. John found an opportunity with Hofstra, with a community member, to embed coding into an existing course. This is where we were looking for opportunities such as this. And it's a grant through the National Science Foundation. It's an outstanding opportunity, it's something that our teachers are working on, have really embraced, and look forward to seeing some of those results there. I'll also jump, go ahead.
Sorry. It's a four-year pilot?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we looking at year one is Living Environment, year two, Living Environment, and chemistry?
No. No, it's different levels of implementation and different modules. In other words, the modules in year one are piloted and they're small. This is almost like your baseline. Then they're differentiated so that you'll have a Living Environment class, and there'll be two separate modules, one for a more sophisticated student who has some coding experience, and one, the same, they're basically labs. So you could give this student a paper version of succession. But there's also two other different models. In the second, in the second phase, those would become more sophisticated and differentiated based on the student's prior experience.
But those students leave and go on to a different science?
Yep.
And we're not folding it into that science?
Not yet.
Now, this is exclusively for Living Environment at this time. So yes, those students will leave, and then the next wave of students will be exposed to this.
They're pretty specific in particular.
So the current sixth graders will be like...
One would think.
Yes, one would hope, right, right. I also wanted to just jump in on, having read all of this curricula this summer as well, since my computer wasn't working very much, I did have these printed out for me. And the IB, the English 11 IBR co-seeded classroom, and I told the teachers this, and I'll say it out loud again, was perhaps the finest curriculum-writing piece I have ever seen in terms of curriculum in this district. Just outstanding, really something that they should be proud of, and this district should be proud of, and we'll talk more about it as we move forward and look back on it. But really incredible work around those, that group in particular.
Can you give us some specifics?
If...
Yeah, I know, you just say...
If you will allow me, I'm going to read to you from the introduction, just a couple of sentences, and you'll see how eloquent this is. Mr. Murphy, are you sweating?
No.
"We, the writers, have made an effort to emphasize the specific places in the curriculum where instruction will be differentiated between the IB students and the Regents students. Our job was made markedly easier by the fact that such differentiated instruction and assessment is part and parcel of the 9th and 10th grade curricula that has been fundamental to the way we naturally teach at all levels. Specifically for each unit in the course, we have made a point to offer one set of essential questions, the IB students, and a separate one for the Regent students. While neither set of questions will limit the possible approaches to achieving the expectations of the question, the Regent students will offer more scaffolding and more access points for students to consider their responses. We have also created separate expectations in the formal assessments, quarterly exams, midterm, and IB internal assessments. The scoring rubrics have been modified in the case of the 12R student assignments. Again, we were deliberate in our choices so as not to limit the levels at which students could achieve excellence, but we also allow the student responses did not always have to demonstrate the highest levels of cognitive taxonomy to be successful. All 11th-grade students are expected to demonstrate mastery of New York State standards on the Regents exam, so the summative assessment at the end of the course will be the same for all." That's just a little snippet of what went into this, and I was really blown away at the level of work diligence and the challenge that they took on, that we gave them, right, as a community and as a board. Make this work for all of our kids, and I'm really confident that they nailed it. Anything else on, I see John slid, he segued right from his presentation into the piece on high school curriculum updates, so that's part of that as well.
Any other board member questions on either? So just a reminder, this is a public work session, we don't typically have mic time tonight, but we're going to open the mic for questions about the district testing results and the high school curriculum updates only. If you have any questions about either subject, you can come up and state your name and your address, and you can ask your question. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Pelletieri, thank you, John Murphy, thank you, Mrs. Les Cross, thank you so much. Okay, we're going to get an update on capital projects now.
Very simply, I'll just turn this, as we do usually, over to Mr. Bartels. Robert?
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Just go through some of the work we're doing in some of the buildings right now. At Covert, we removed a roll-down door between the kitchen area and the gym, which was causing some trouble, and we put in a new door, which will be manually opened and closed, so we're not going to have any issues there. The replacement of the climbing wall handholds are coming in this week, so by next week, they should be completed. Over at Hewitt, we ran into a little problem with the stair treads. They were supposed to be done this past weekend. Contractor came in, started his work, and realized there was asbestos in the stair treads, so another job that's going to get held up. We're getting quotes right now about what it will take to remove that asbestos, and we're looking at probably the holiday break to get that work done. At Riverside, the principal's furniture came in that we had ordered, that's going to be installed next Wednesday. At Wilson, we had air conditioning in a second-floor room at the end of the hallway that was finally completed. Middle School, Room 120, the band room, they were having some humidity issues there, and we had some concerns about the HVAC system. We had a couple of different contractors in, working on that, and we believe that that problem has been remedied, so we're going to keep an eye on that over the next couple of weeks, just to make sure there's no more problems.
What was the remedy?
They had gone in and kind of cleaned out the entire ductwork to come in, and also changed some of the controls out on the system. So there's two different contractors working on that. At the high school, the toilet partition came in, in the girls' locker room, we put in a new toilet. Missing partitions, that came in, so that is now operational. And we also have our, we've had some humidity issues in the art wing. We've had our architect in, along with the contractor. They're continuing to look at some of the reasons why that is happening. We had some additional work done this summer to install something called Raywall valves in all of the rooms. This room has been better. Some of the other rooms from the new addition have been, are fine. The rooms in the art wing still are experiencing some humidity issues, so we have the manufacturer of the valves and the air conditioning units coming in in the next couple of weeks to see if they can figure out exactly what the problem is with the units and why they're not functioning as they're supposed to. That's it.
Thank you. Any questions?
We had issues at the cabinets at Covert, has that been resolved?
The ones on the stage?
No, in the kitchen.
Kitchen, no, that's, they're getting little magnetic strips to hold the doors closed. They have not been installed yet, but they have the solution, what they plan on doing, they just haven't kind of done yet.
We talked about control systems in the school district overall, having one as opposed to two, or how it's been worked out. Are we any closer to resolve on that issue?
We've asked our architects to look into that, to come to some sort of solution on what we can do. It's out of our expertise, myself and Director of Facilities, so we're going to have the architect come in, they're going to look at everything that we've done, the prior bond issue, we've done through the energy performance contracts in the past, and all the existing controls, and see if they can come up with one plan to kind of redo everything.
And we've had issues with our playgrounds, I'm sorry. Have we replaced the problem parts on our playgrounds, or are we still waiting for more?
We have at Wilson, Watson, and Riverside, we are still waiting for some parts at Covert and Hewitt. As soon as those come in, they will get installed. Based on the timeframes, they really should have been in kind of this week, so I'm expecting that to happen almost any day now.
Any other questions? Word. Okay, I'm just going to give a brief update on the search for the superintendent. If you haven't heard already, Dr. Johnson is retiring at the end of the year.
Where was that mask, man?
We haven't told anybody that yet. We sent home a letter to all the students, giving them dates that are coming up, so just wanted to give a recap of where we've been so far and where we're headed. Over a course of two days at the end of September, our search firm that we're working with, HYA, had seen over 84 people in various focus groups. So that was a great lucrative, you know, two days for us all. They got some great data. They'll be putting together a leadership profile from there. I just wanted to remind everybody that the survey is on our website and will close on October 15th, so that will close between now and our next meeting, so wanted to announce that. And most importantly, on Monday coming up on October 7th, we have two community forums that are open to the public, and both of them are going to be at the South Side Middle School Auditorium. There's one in the daytime for people who are able to come during the day at 10:00 a.m. and for more convenient hours, maybe at night at 7:30 p.m. They're both, like I said, at the South Side Middle School Auditorium, and HYA will facilitate those, so they're going to be asking questions. You can bring any concerns or things that you'd like to be looked at for the search. And on those two days, we also have a teacher and staff open house that day, so we have invited all of our faculty and staff to come to that, and I think we do have another focus group or two scheduled on those days as well. Just two more things on our superintendent. He's being honored two times coming up that I would like to just mention. On October 19th, the Rockford Center Guild for the Arts is honoring Dr. Johnson, along with another man, Mr. Murphy. Not our Mr. Murphy, a different Mr. Murphy. So that is on October 19th, and... Mr. Murphy. So that is on October 19th. And Dr. Palatieri and I are a part of the Ed Foundation liaisons for the school, and we went to their meeting last week. And on March 28th, Dr. Johnson will be the sole honoree. There will not be any Ruth's Finns recipients this year, so just wanted to throw out the date to everybody on March 28th. So we have some opportunities to say thank you again, and we will do so until June 30th, 2020. Maybe beyond, but at least until then. Okay. We have a couple of policies that are in Stage 3, so we're going to move on to those. Looking at 7511, immunization of students. Any questions or comments from the board? Thank you. We'll move, move forward. And 7511R, immunizations of students with the guidelines. Any questions or comments from the board? No? Okay. We'll move that one on as well. And Dr. Johnson, it looks like we have a gift being presented?
There's a gift, yes. This actually was added rather late to the, the agenda. The PTA very graciously provided a grant to members of the staff over at Hewitt School. And what they are looking to do is to have the activities coincide with the Hewitt Fair this weekend. I'm not sure that it can happen at this point because it kind of landed on our desk rather late, but nevertheless, it's a very worthy project, something that I would strongly ask that we consider. There is one typo in there. It's not for $28,000. It's for $2,850. So, but it, it's looking to get something underway, work with the third-grade students, and in fact, make it a continuing project, just not in the fall, but also planting what appears to be a, a series of annuals and perennials, and then maintaining this over a period of time. So I don't know much about the plants themselves. John, you may be able to help us with that, but.
I'll get you.
Are they planning to do it this fall?
It looks like they want to do some of it now, and then again, pick it up again in the spring.
I'd urge that they reach out, you know, the maintenance department, make sure it's in line with what their plans are, because I know that the maintenance department has been going through the buildings and upgrading the gardens and things like that, so.
This, this, what I, I, we are very much aware of that. And quite frankly, we are very pleased to see what the maintenance department has been doing around the school district. They have literally transformed many of the gardens in front of our schools and made it much more attractive. So we're very proud of the work that they have done. This is only for a small portion in front of, right by the front door. I think they want to make it an ongoing instructional project that's associated with the, with plants and provide opportunities for students to become much more familiar with what is involved in both planting and maintaining a garden.
I mean, I just urge them to make sure even, I don't know if they've looked at the shade and things like that, that, that would make a plant thrive or not. So in the past, I've been critical of some placements of things and all, you know, and, and what the PTA has given. Grateful that they give a gift, but where it's placed and how, if it, if it's appropriate for that area. A garden that teaches kids how plants grow is an amazing thing, but the placement, like I said, is very, is very important. That makes a big difference on the success of the garden. So I don't know who's, is the PTA, do they have it planned out, plotted out and all?
It seems like it's pretty.
In all honesty, yeah.
It seems like it's pretty planned out, exactly what they want to plant and kind of where.
So they're going to do it next weekend?
I think that, I think that there's maybe a hope that they could start tomorrow because their fair is on Saturday.
Sometime after midnight this evening, I think.
Right.
Is that right?
Right.
Okay, so do I have a motion to accept the gift of the budding botanist garden at Hewitt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other questions? All in favor? Aye. Okay. Thank you, Hewitt PTA. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the minutes from September 11th, September 13th, and September 17th?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to approve financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to accept receipt of financial reports as listed?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Can I have a motion to accept Board Actions A through, let's see, all the way to the end, H plus an addendum?
So moved.
Second? Any questions?
Do we have to be determined for any sum there? How are we forming contracts with it? To be determined for it?
Does it bus companies?
Yeah.
Because we don't have any students at this point.
Okay, so you just replace with that.
Yeah, what we do with the, the contracts every year is to keep them in effect, is we just keep reapproving them every year. Sometimes we'll get a kid in the middle of the year, a student in the middle of the year.
My wife's going to speak to her, Roger.
In the middle of the year, but this way it just keeps the contract going.
Just want to comment too, for the overnight trips, these are really nice trips for the students. So, any questions? All in favor? Aye. I have a motion to retire to executive session to discuss specific personnel litigation matters.
So moved.
Second?
And negotiations?
And, it didn't say, okay. And negotiations. Second?
Second.
If there's any questions on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Meeting's adjourned. Thank you. Our next meeting is on October 22nd.
Here?
Here.